Did you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's nice to see the scalps stand within their hands of our hearts.
So the first item is a presentation by Westchester Power regarding renewal of the community choice aggregation program. Does you want to come up? Great. So I'm on a record like.
So I'm Jasmine Graham, I'm here at the office of Westchester Power. And I'm just here to talk about the RQ process, how it went, and just what's happening moving forward. So we completed our request for a bidding process to the bidding process to the energy suppliers on Friday. And we started with five, asked of five energy supply companies who are interested. By the time submissions came, three companies submitted proposals. We went with Constellation again, Constellation is currently the supplier of the program. And again, we chose a 24-month contract. So the big criteria was pretty much the same structurally as the first time. Residential rates had come under the previous 12-month average, which was 8.26 cents. And commercial rates had to come under the previous 12-month, 24-month average, which was 9.06 cents. And so the other, the only change structurally to the contract really is that we were previously getting national wind power. So the green supply was backed by national renewable energy certificates, meaning they match all of our green usage and they put wind power on the grid somewhere nationally. Now, moving forward, we're going to have hydro power and it's going to be from New York State. So all of the green supply customers will be matched with New York State Hydro, which will be put here on the New York State grid. So we're really happy about that. To give you some context, the rates right now for a standard residential account is 7.78 cents per kilowatt hour. For a green account, it's eight cents per kilowatt hour. And on the commercial side, it's 9.93 cents for the standard and 9.97 for the green. So moving forward, we are actually having the same rate for our small commercial and our residential accounts. And those rates came pretty much exactly where they are now, which we're really happy about. Because as I said before, the cap was 8.26 and 9.06. The new standard supply rate is 7.709 compared to what was 7.7 or 9.93. So, you know, commercial accounts are saving two cents per kilowatt hour now compared to what the rate was before. And then for the green supply, it's 7.959. So it actually came lower than what we're paying now. So we're definitely happy about that. We have some updated numbers on how Westchester Power has done so far. In content territories, we've saved $14.1 million. That's from June of 2016 through September 2018. And in the entire program, which includes Nice and New York State Electric and Gas Utilities up north, we saved $15.7 million. If you flip again, you'll see Irvington's results to date. So here in Irvington, we have saved $343,000. Or, yeah, seventy-four, but that's about it. And then, so that breaks down to essentially most accounts because you chose the green supplier and the green supply, which means they've saved about $200.66. And if they were in the standard supply, that would be about 301.65. But that data is a little bit skewed because there's so few standard accounts. So it kind of skews, you know, what those savings are. And then the green commercial accounts saved $34.61. As I said, the new commercial rate is going to be about two cents lower than where it is now. So we expect those commercial rates to perform a lot more favorably. You have no standard commercial accounts, so that's why there's the NA there. You have also offset 12,322 metric tons of CO2. So that is equivalent to 2,639 cars off of the road for a year, or 30 million driving miles offset. My personal favorite is 319,339 tree seedlings grown for 10 years. So definitely don't underestimate the environmental impact of what we're doing here. So just moving forward, the next step is obviously to sign the contract, which I know that you guys are working on. And then in terms of, you know, for residents, they'll receive a notification letter just like last time. And it'll be in mid-November. And it'll describe, you know, the new products, so it'll let them know that now we're in New York State Hydro Power. It'll let them know what the new rates are, and it'll also let them know how to opt out. So, you know, going on our website, westchesterpower.org, filling out the opt-out form under Energy Choices, or giving our office a call on 914-242-4725. Again, anyone has the ability to opt out at any time with no penalty. And, you know, we make it easy to do so, so it takes, you know, under two minutes if that's the case. But, you know, as we've seen, we've saved money and we're doing great things for the environment. We expect a lot of participation.
Just a quick update from our side, which is you already approved essentially a draft of the contract and you left it in my hands to sign and with the final approval of the village attorneys. We just got the contract like literally last week, I think it was. So we're working through that and hopefully we'll be signing it. So you won't be seeing it again, but you just know that it's going to continue.
Oh, and the last thing is that the current contract ends December 31st. So everyone will be rolled into these new rates starting January, depending on when they're first need to read this.
Perfect time, Gary.
Oh, I got stuck on my two red lights in Dumbfired, that's true.
Oh, I'm here from Westchester Power.
Yes, you know what, I wanted to point out two things. Well, are they from the?
It's easier to have stuff in writing, go back and forth.
So next is review, the parcels recommended for parkland dedication. Chilled itself. All in demand and black.
So, so we're going to try to go through, you know, our pack, and I'll go over the information that was presented to you. Back who's late spring, I think it was. And we'll try to go through kind of, we've stratified the various parcels that are in and around the Irvington Woods. Each have kind of different differing statuses. And so based upon the status that they have is, will kind of dictate what the next action might be. So we'll try to try to go through that.
So what we basically did is, based on the charge you presented back to us several months ago, we had many meetings and we took a look at all 19 parcels that make up this area. And basically, what we're proposing, the most exciting part is what I'm here to ask you to do is to consider creating something that could be called the Irvington Woods Park, or something like that. And it would consist of 13 parcels out of the 19. There would be six parcels that would be part of the woods. Everything is part of the woods, okay? Remember, all 19 are part of the woods. 13, we're asking you to either dedicate or pull together to create what would become the new Irvington Woods Park. What's important to remember is that all 19 of these parcels are governed by the rules and regulations that we have in our code that govern the Irvington Parks. As you also know, we are beginning an extensive look at all of the rules and regulations that govern all parks. And throughout the fall, there'll be a series of meetings, which I'm still trying to figure out how I'm breaking down. But I've committed to hold several meetings to give the community a chance to come in to not only speak towards what they think the rules of the woods should be, but the rules of all of our parks. We have situations in all parks that need to get looked at and discussed. And our PAC has been spending a great deal of time trying to figure out the best way to get as much community input as we can. But back here, this is to us is the starting point. Because when we start developing the rules, we probably will look at things a little differently, knowing that this new park will be created. So what we're doing is if you look at the map that Larry's put in front of you, everything inside of the green, and imagine if you will, the green goes around here, this is Worthington Farms. Everything in there is where the 19 parcels sit. Everything inside the yellow is what we are proposing to become the new Irvington Woods Park, okay? This area over here is Macy Park, okay? Here's the reservoir. The reservoir has two parcels, one here and one here. Parking lot is located right here, and there's that very steep hill there. So I'd like to go over each parcel just to let you know what fits in where. So regarding Westwood, which was where the conversation started with the presentation by Cheff, there are four parcels that are village-owned with no restriction. That would all be included into, is that numbered last?
Yeah.
Okay. So 1, 2, 3, and 4, you can see are clearly part of what we asked to be in this park. Number?
It's a little, it's a little triangle.
Yeah, it's zero plus one acre, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Field Point, which is on there, mark number five, was already dedicated as a park, but we want it to become part of this one new park. Number 6, 7, and 8 are part of Hermit's Grave, no restrictions, and we want to pull them in. And then the most controversial, or the one that had probably the most debate, because there was very little debate between the Woods Committee, our PAC, and staff as to how we got to this point. Worthington Farm is that area in pink that you see. Access to it is extremely difficult. The terrain is extremely.
Steep.
Steep. And if you look at the, you know, on a map where they show you the red lines, which kind of indicates slope, well, the red lines for that piece of property are almost non-believable. However, the reason I'm putting it on there, and I actually think Larry and I differ on this piece of property, and that's where you guys are going to come in, is the goal here was to protect our parkland. The goal was to take the woods, put it in a situation where it would be easier for you, for us, and all the layers in between to make the parkland stay what it is and what we, I think, all envisioned it to be. There's not a downside to me, including Worthington Farms, because whether we put it in the park or not, we're still responsible for using our rules and regulations to govern it. So just like we have to, if we're not, we're not including the reservoir in this new park, but because the reservoir's part of the woods, our rules and regs would govern it. Same thing with Worthington Farm. So from my perspective, if you can put it in there, it just gives you another layer of protection that it stays a park.
But it's only when not contiguous, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Nor does it have frontage.
Right. You would likely need to acquire an easement or property, which both could be extremely expensive, so.
If you even wanted to invite anyone out there.
Correct, correct. That's definitely another point.
So these are, this is privately owned?
Yes.
Yes. So, so those nine are ours, no restriction, easily fit into wanting to make it a park. Then there are four parcels. First, number 10, which is 511 on the map. 10 is one of the Sina Hudson Land Trusts, where there is a, there is a.
Conservation easement.
Conservation easement, but it would be in the park. 11 is another piece of Westwood, which is also the second Sina Hudson piece of property. Same thing, some conservation easements, but would be in the park. And then the two last ones would be, number 12 is the Jew property, which indeed that the village created, has some restrictions on it. And 13 is a Hermit's Graves property, which also has some terminology in its deed that would limit its use. But all four of those would be part of the park. So you're taking those 13 parcels and you're going to, we're asking you to consider making it one park. We see a lot of really good things about saying it's a park.
Sure. When you say that there's restrictions on use, what do you mean? You mentioned that with that little piece that you said was in the Hermit's Grave, right? And you mentioned something over on the Westwood Sina.
Joe, it's helpful. I don't want to.
They're generally, excuse me one second, I think I can answer quickly without going into the individual details of it. The restrictions that we're talking about are actually more restrictive than just a general parkland dedication. So, you know, for example, some of the properties that are there have specific restrictions that require them to be either open space or passive recreation only. So that's beyond just the simple. Sina Hudson one and this number 13 as well. So those, and of course, the Jew property that we just acquired.
So that basically.
So that goes beyond just a simple parkland dedication.
Right, does it change the regulations? Or would you?
No.
No, what happens is if you. Well, again, our rules would govern it. And the only time that you, things change is if someone proposes to do something on any of this land that would be considered an alienation of parkland, which, you know, is a term we've learned quite a bit about. There are so many layers before someone would be able to do something like that, that, again, we can never imagine it happening. But for the public's perception, and for us, I think it's important to stand up and say, this is parkland. These are our woods and we are going to preserve them as woods. The four pieces that we just mentioned, as Larry said, have an extra step on them already, which would make it even harder than the other nine that we're asking you to bring in right now, okay? I would like to discuss the five, the other.
Can I ask a question about that? Because one thing I don't quite understand how it would work. So let's say you make it all a park, and there's certain parts of this park, 10 to 13, that you can't do things that you could do otherwise in the park. Calling it all one park, how do you, how do you put the limits on those parcels? So let's say people want to use it for some kind of a camping festivity, you know, they're all going to go out there and camp or whatever, which I think would be okay under your park rules, would not be okay unless it's 10, 11, and 12, 13. How would you?
Be passive, overnight camping?
Probably not.
Where that comes in is where the rules and regulations.
Okay, maybe, I think it probably wouldn't be, but let's say you come up with a use that truly is not passive.
Right now, if someone wants to, when the Boy Scouts write their letter every year to have a sleepover in the woods, we determine what areas they should, you know, they recommend where they want to go, but we determine where they go. And when we create the new rules and regulations, there will be steps, there'll be things in there that for those particular properties, if someone asks to use it, they may have a different requirement.
You'll still have them differentiated.
For these, for these, there would be probably more limitations. For example, we would allow a sleepover near Split Rock. We would not in the Jew property. So we think we have the opportunity, and that's why we're waiting to see what happens here, then to go back and say, okay, we've got some unique situations, we've got to create rules and regs. What do we want to do here and what makes the most sense? What makes the most sense that we can govern it, yet the public can maximize the better parts of it for whatever it is that they want to do? So the pieces on the bottom, the reservoir, which was, is an important topic. I actually, in the beginning of the process, really was pretty all-in that I thought the reservoir should be part of this potential new park. Along with the other piece of property, which is labeled as number 15, where the parking lot is, and then there's a very, very steep slope above the parking lot, okay?
This thing is 15.
That's Macy, no, this whole thing is 17, 18, and 19, this is Macy Park. 15 is, 15 is really. That's 15.
What is 16?
16 is over here, that was a different discussion. That's county property up here. Yeah, we'll get to that shortly. And then 17, 18, and 19, which is Macy Park.
So on the reservoir, if we include the reservoir in this park, if there's ever a situation, it would be a pretty serious situation, you know, close to maybe, you know, I wouldn't use the word catastrophic, but.
Armageddon.
Really bad. But if, let's say the water department, for whatever reason, had to put a new building on the south side of the reservoir, or had to put some new pipes in, or whatever. Based on the definition of parkland, they would be, they would be alienating parkland. So we'd be going against our own wishes, if you will. So we felt leaving those two pieces of parcel alone, understanding that if someone's using the reservoir for the wrong reason, our rules and regs would govern how that gets dealt with.
So we're talking 14 to 15?
We're talking, we're talking actually for 14 through 19. But 14 and 15 in particular, because I think we all view the reservoir and the other piece of the reservoir as, you can make a real good argument that the parking lot should be part of the park, but the parking lot makes such a small piece of number 15 that to dedicate that whole parcel to the park, again, just would not have made sense. We didn't, you know, Larry did a really good job of explaining the difficulty we would be putting ourselves in. And again, like with Worthington Farms, because we have the ability to govern this park with the rules we're going to establish, nothing will happen at the reservoir that's in violation of that. It just means in a catastrophe, if the water department or the village has to take action to do something with the reservoir that we won't be alienating it as parkland.
But we've, given the topography and the location, why would parcel 15 be used for anything?
Outside of the parking lot, it wouldn't.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Basically, yeah, you're right.
Well, it's not all steep, but some of it's flat.
There is a, there is a path at the top.
I understand that.
But it is limited, you know?
So I understand the argument of trying to keep. Alienation of, emergency use of the reservoir, but.
There are, there is, if I'm not mistaken, there's some pipe or drain.
There's already a tie line.
There's a tie line that runs through. Through that hilly area.
Right, through 15. From the other, from the other water tank on Mountain Road down to this facility here. We already have utilities that run through this area. You know, to us, it made sense not to.
But doesn't it also run through the yellow area then?
Well, sure, yeah. But to us, it made sense not to, specifically this area in and around the reservoir, not to formally dedicate it, but still manage it as part of the park, part of the woods.
Well said. And then 16 is the county property, which Larry pointed out.
So that's up here, it's part of the Westwood acquisition, but that's the one that the county actually purchased.
And we're already responsible for, you know, that was part of the agreement. And I believe that's the 300-acre piece, if I'm not mistaken.
That piece?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Not the 300.
No, that's 300. Yeah, that's about 12.
It's about 12, right.
So, yeah.
And then the last three, which I think are self-explanatory, are the Macy Park properties, the three.
This is the compost?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, the compost site is not a separate parcel. It's kind of a lot that extends over a couple of different parcels. You know, the compost site would need to be, like we did with Sina Hudson and their conservation easement on number 10. The compost site would need to be carved out of any formal parkland dedication because the use in and of itself is probably considered an alienation of parkland.
Right.
Certainly an alienation of the, of the conservation easement on 10. But it's an existing use, and we call it the compost site, it's actually a transfer site. We don't compost there anymore.
That word just stuck with it.
So the organic, our organic waste still, sometimes.
Stored and transported out, yes.
It's on 10 now?
It's.
It's on 10?
It's partially, here's the line. That's, that's 10, that's.
So parts not ours and parts not?
Right, and this is not current, number three is not currently parkland. Number 10 is covered by the conservation easement.
We do the carbon.
Yes.
I'm simplifying it for you. I think it would be great to make this be known as the Irvington Park. Again, the name is still something that, you know, you guys can deal with, but it's all woods. You're responsible for it. You're responsible to maintain it, you're responsible to look over it. And, you know, whether the ones that are clearly not needed to be put in are there, but the other 13, you know, allow you to have a unified, you know, park, which again, I think the public would really like to have.
So right now, just what this will accomplish is making clear and consistent regulations for the entire tract. Make it one continuous, if you will, park with the possible exception of nine, which is sitting over here all by itself. And be able to, what will change in terms of usage?
Well, that'll depend on what the final rules and recommendations are. Right now, technically, the Field Point piece of property, which was dedicated as a park, is a village park, which means there are no dogs allowed in it.
That's five.
Which, which, which no one, that's my.
Five.
Five is Field Point.
No one who looks at the Field Point property thinks keeping dogs out of there may, it's not even something we're going to do. So, you know, you're going to have rules that say dogs are allowed. I'm assuming the rule will be dogs are allowed on leash in the Irvington Woods Park, which would encompass all everything.
The issue from the rules side, and I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it needs to be. From a rules standpoint, we have rules that govern, you know, four or five of our named parks. This is not a named park in our regulations. It falls under the category of other, which have rules that aren't really what is in effect. You know, is what's really happening out there.
And inconsistent among the parcels, even though they're contiguous?
Yeah, well, but they're not, they're not anything, they all fall under another category. So it's just, it's never been a named park, and, or at least the regulations don't reflect it as a named park. So we have regulations for Sina Hudson, and you all know we have regulations for Matheson and Memorial, and maybe even Hastings, but we don't have it for, for the Irvington Woods Park, or whatever it's called.
Now, would a person using this walking dogless or with dog, whatever, know when they went from one parcel to another? Right, not at all, right?
Not by.
No, that's.
There's no signage or no way to differentiate, you're just walking in the woods?
Outside of potentially changes to mapping that we have, I, you wouldn't know.
Okay.
You just wouldn't.
So I understand about the parking lot, but is, this all has to be included in that because it came as a piece? Or is, or is there some reason why, why or why not? This part of this whole Macy can't be the park as well?
Yeah, it's, first of all, we don't, we don't own.
It's not ours.
We don't own Macy Park, that's owned by the county. But we are required, right, but we are required to manage.
Okay, all right.
So, so there's no formal action that we will be taking on that parcel.
We're not allowed to.
We can't, it's not ours. It's belonged by the, belongs to the county.
Where does the county, the county is responsible for all of this and putting.
Not a lot, no.
Okay, you didn't make a line there.
So 16, 17, and 18 and 19 are county?
16 is here.
Sixteen is here.
Seventeen and nineteen are here, up to this line right here, roughly.
So, when you're in Hartsley and you're in what they call Macy Park?
That's a different...
That's a different Macy Park.
Macy Park is huge.
With closed soccer games.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, right.
The piece of property that is within the Westwood area, the northern part, that will get, that will, like everything up there, get enormous usage, as it already does. So, I mean, that's, you know, it's just, it's very different than the Macy Park part of the parcels. You know, the north part, from field point up, is really where the action is, if you will. You know, the goal, looking at this, was number one, protection of land, maximizing use, maintaining. Those are the three things, the three basic things. And in that order, you know, we have, we felt tremendous responsibility to make sure that we didn't leave doors open where anyone would think that we weren't doing our most to protect that, all of this land, because that's primary. And then, secondly, you know, what can we do to make sure that our rules make it safe for people? And yet, the most people in the community and from all over will come together to appreciate this just amazing resource that we're lucky enough to have.
So, the county said to us, okay, you can use it, you can maintain it. It's yours, kind of, it's really ours, but you're like renting it or have control over it.
Yeah, I mean...
Did they at some point say, you know what?
No, it's a little simple, it's a little...
Do you want that?
No, well, when the county purchased this property with three million dollars, we entered into an inter-ministerial agreement with the county. And part of the inter-ministerial agreement...
Two thousand and three, I think.
Right. Part of the inter-ministerial agreement was to build a nature center, which we did. A little longer than we envisioned, but we did it. And the other part of the agreement was to manage the county parkland that they just purchased, as well as the lands that are considered Macy Park in Irvington.
That was not part of the same?
So, we manage it. We're responsible for it.
So, do the village's park rules apply to them?
We see no reason why they wouldn't.
Okay.
But, I mean...
Yeah, the statutes aren't yet...
They can't expect us to take care of it without being able to implement the rules for it.
I'm just trying to get a sense of that.
And there's, you know, there are limitations written into the inter-ministerial agreement about residency requirements, things like that. We can't, we can't...
But we could just say...
Properties and residents only, of course, so... But anyway, but beyond that, we don't see why, there's any reason why we can't manage it in the way we need to manage it.
Would there be any residency restrictions in any parts of this?
No.
Okay, there'd be certain use...
The only time, the only area where that comes into play at all is for use of the nature center because, based on rentals or something like that. There, you know, again, just in case it's out there. There's been not, zero discussion of limiting who this park would develop. We would be in violation of the county properties, and I believe also this two Sina Hudson's, if we tried to do it. But no one's...
That's still...
That's not what the goal is.
How do you control, how do you border the woods?
No, you would be looking at...
Yeah, that'd be great.
You're probably looking at sixty percent.
So, I have two questions. What about the area across Cyrus Field, where the police shooting range is? Is that, what is that land?
It's actually, it's actually part of parcel fifty-nine, fifty-two, which is, it also includes the parking lot, that sloped hill we discussed, and then you cross the street, and that's all part of it. We did not look at that, nor did we have any desire to make that part of our conversation.
Why is that?
We think it's just way too complicated for us. And again, it's almost looked at as a separate piece of property. How can I, how could we sit here and tell you we're going to be designing trails and pathways and encourage people to come? How do we manage a gun range in that property?
So, what is it? What is it, it's part of parcel fifteen?
Yes.
So, what's the legal protection of it right now? What is it? It's just village?
Village property, yep.
We do not intend to go over and tell the police to stop shooting.
No, until you said that, I was about that as a part of that same parcel. I was going to argue that why aren't we protecting more of the stuff to the east of the reservoir and just carve the parking lot out? But, yeah, was it... Now, I don't know if it makes any sense.
It got complicated. You know, again, like I said, first of all, you know, just so you do know, we have spent a lot of time, this is the alienation of parkland. And just to show you how special I feel, this is my autographed Chet Kerr version of his study. I made Chet autograph it at one of the meetings because I have spent much time with it. And in all honesty, wouldn't be at this point with as much confidence as I have in what we've done without the work that Chet had done for us. And again, without Larry's help, and again, the support from RPAC in the woods. You know, we heard a lot of wild things that were out that I, we were trying, you know, there's these hidden agendas for fields and activity areas and, you know... Again, I'm just telling you, it comes down to those three things, you know? To protect, to maximize, and to maintain. That's what we're trying to do.
So, how is it to help us maximize the use? How will it get more use?
Again, you're not going to be having people walk their dogs on field point when they're not supposed to. You're going to make it one, so the rules you develop take care of all of that. So, it becomes easier. So, it's not going to, well, this piece of property, I'm allowed to have dogs. And this one, I'm not. The rules will govern all of it. Yes, there'll be some...
Consistency?
There'll be the ability to be much more consistent. There's no question.
Did the Sina Hudson pieces ever say they would restrict dog there?
No. Well, no, and considering of their twenty-five pieces of property, the only one that they have where dogs aren't allowed is Sina Hudson Park. I don't think they would have anything to say about that.
Probably couldn't have a dog, but I would think that would be cats that you can walk dogs.
And there's no intention of revisiting the dog park up in the woods.
Now, you refer a bunch of these, three of them, four of them, as Herman's grave. I know about Herman's grave. But did the ownership of this have something to do with who owned it at the time? Why are they all called that? Did they, where did they come from?
Six, seven, and eight?
Well, I imagine Chet probably knows, but in fact, I haven't counted.
Six, seven, eight, thirteen.
Six, seven, and eight, I don't know the history of. Thirteen, I do know the history of because we acquired it in the last fifteen years. Thirteen, I know in the last fifteen years we acquired. So, you know, that was a village acquisition and does have some restrictions in terms of open space. Six, seven, and eight, I'm not exactly sure, but we...
Did I ask Chet for one line? Why, where did we get it from?
So, here, this is the kind of collective we thought of as Herman Graves, okay? This, this piece right here is what you acquired, is called the...
Quiller.
Quiller property. That has a slight restriction, so it has open space. These three properties were separately owned by individuals. And when the sawmill parkway was built and this road was essentially shut down, the village, either the village or the town foreclosed on these properties, and they only made their way to the village. It was back in the forties or fifties. So, I, again, in that book, we'll have specific history of each one, but that's all they got to do where they...
Kind of like eminent domain, they kind of said...
It was just foreclosure, it was tax foreclosure.
Okay, they just paid the taxes. There was no road to get to them. It said, I'm not paying the taxes.
The lane disappeared.
Okay.
Worthington Farm, I guess.
So, you want me to explain that one? How it got stuck out in the middle of the area? Yes. So, this is the Worthington Farm area. Before the sawmill was put in place, the Worthington Farm extended over here into Hartsley. And when they built the sawmill, this portion of it got cut off from the rest of the farm. And again, this was also foreclosed on. But I think the county or the town, which only made their way to us, that's all.
They have Worthington Street on.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
There's a Worthington, right, right?
So, what, this seems to be the only controversial piece, from what I gather, so...
We think, so we think, we think everything else, we think inside the yellow is without question.
A no-brainer.
A no-brainer. I don't think, I'll just point to the, got to the word, do you agree?
And we, that's...
Chet?
I'm more than willing to speak up, but I don't want to...
I'm asking, in the yellow?
So, we wholly support what Joe is proposing about all the stuff within the yellow. And for reasons that I'm more than willing to explain, we fully support, this should be part of the park as well. There's very good possible reasons to make that part of the park now, and there's no reason not to do it. So, we support everything that Joe has said. We support, for reasons I'm willing to explain, keeping this not, designating this not as parkland right now to ensure that the village's ability to make it a drinking source if it has to. What we agree with Joe, it should be included in the woods conceptually and subject to the rules. And frankly, the third fact, it's a potential drinking source, highlights, I think that should be part of the reason why it's not being part of the woods, just to highlight the importance of protecting in the future.
And what's the downside of making this part of it?
Well, that's why I put it in, because I don't, I don't see a downside. Because again, if you don't, and something happens there, technically, we're still responsible. We have to enforce our rules. So, if that's the case, bring it in. It's part of the park. If something happens where you develop a way in or something changes, you've already protected it. If someone decides they're trying to do something with it, you've given it an extra layer of protection. I'm not sure, because I haven't heard them all, I'm not sure I even know what Chet's ideas are on it. But again, there was no downside for us to do it because we're not going to, we're not changing anything about it right now. We're not trying to make access to it right now. But again, because we want the public to feel you are doing as much as you can to protect these woods, it's just one you just pull into the pile.
But was there somebody objected to it, that you...
I did.
Larry?
So, what, what?
Probably reasons that people won't find all that compelling. My, the main thing is that it really, for all practical purposes, can't be included as part of the park in terms of access.
Access.
Or at least in the published map. You know, I would hate to see a published map with that parcel on it.
Because there's no way to get to it.
There's no way to get to it legally.
Can't go...
Of course, some people's...
It's a trespass.
Right.
Okay.
So, maybe that's more of my issue, but look, I'm a...
Is this county property out here that sawmill park?
Yes, yeah. But I'm a practical person when it comes to this. And I see a parcel that's located next to a highway, and it's a municipal parcel. And that could be useful down the road. I don't know in what capacity.
Probably sell town.
I don't know, whatever. I'm just, my point is that it's...
Is there a different designation that would kind of...
Well, if you don't make it, if you don't make it part of the park, it becomes number, it just goes down into the bottom group. It would be part of the woods, but not part of the park.
And when you made maps of things, you would include it? Which would kind of negate...
Well, no, I would, I mean, that's my point.
You don't really want people to try to get there.
Which is why, you know, we're kind of punty. We, you know, we both had this conversation many times. And, you know, whichever direction or whichever way you guys feel fit with it, we'll, you know, we'll find a way to make it work. But, you know, again, Larry, and I appreciate Larry's allowing us because that was the input that the committees and the people I worked with felt. And that's why we're at, we put it in there. But we fully, and everyone that's dealt with this understands that that may be a decision you decide to go in a different direction.
Topographically, is it usable? Is it just a steep slope?
It really isn't. It's very steep. I can bring up the topo if you want to see it.
Yeah. But it could be a rock-climbing pole.
It's a rock park.
If you could get to it.
It's not going to be down there, that close to Sawmill Parkway.
So, what'd you say?
It's not fun to me. The plaza and the thruway.
Kind of sounds like the ocean.
Right there. It's like, if you don't like that background noise of the cars going by, it's a nice place to be. Other than that, you know, it's...
I thought Larry would say you want to put the DPW site there.
Well, carved out of a, carved out of the cave, yeah, right.
I like that idea. The shipping log coming.
Well, look, I'm not...
Good luck in the knees.
I'm not trying to advance any plans. I'm just suggesting that it has, it has little utility from a traditional park standpoint. I guess maybe if I lived right behind it, I'd be more opinionated. I'll give you that. But I, like I said, I see a parcel next to a highway, and I don't see a park there.
I'm really concerned about the trespass, the necessity of trespass to access there. Because once you designate it as a park, you know, how can you have a park that people can't get to?
Right, wrong.
I'm sorry?
I gotta zoom in a little bit.
You could, right, you could...
You could use your drone.
Which wrong, we...
I don't want to talk about drones.
No, we are going to...
It's a little Amazon...
No, we are.
Yes, we are.
No, I know.
I mean, when I did Herman's grave, it seemed like it's gone so far. I was like, I wouldn't have even thought of going any further. It's already so...
Those lines are very close together.
Yes, you do, just keep going and going. How should people go down here? Do they use this part?
All the time.
Yes.
Really?
Yes. It's great hiking trails, it's great mountain biking trails.
And the whole trail system, is it there?
And last, we're involved in each dog training.
Yeah, probably less down there, but further more in the northern part.
I mean, this is pretty steep getting down into there.
No, it's, no, it's quite long, it's quite long.
Well, then I'd have lost by now. Stop, be here! It was here.
This will give you, this will give you a different look at it.
You are in Worthington Park. No, it's in Worthington Park.
Here's the reservoir, okay? These are, this is the Macy Park. And as you can see, it looks much different when you're looking at it here than when you're looking the way it is here. And you can see how close it is to the actual field point park and how close it is to the Herman's Graves property. It's, you can understand it better on this map than you can on this one.
I'll take the tour, walk out there, that's over. I'm sorry, this is the guy at work.
Chet's guided tour.
Yeah, her's great.
Because I, you know, we take some time, yeah.
It's an hour parcel.
So, that's the way it's pointed.
So, it's so... Who is this, right up here?
That, this parcel is right here.
Is that so long?
That's the old Rivals and Tax parcel. It's not owned by Lou Bruno, who owns this piece of property right here. And he's just redid, there's a house here, he's just redone, but this is all Macy's.
Is that fifty-one you're talking about?
No, fifty-two, that's the Rivals and Tax.
Okay.
So, and that was Salwai Lu, and he just redid the house right here.
And does he have any opinion of that?
I'm more than willing to just tell you guys what I know about that parcel and my thoughts on it. If I just didn't know, if I can interject or I don't want to steal Joe's thunder.
Well, I, I have no thought.
Don't leave me out.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Okay, so, if I can, specifically dealing with Worthington parcel and how it fits into the Riveson parcel. Specifically, as I said, we think it should be designated as parkland. There's no reason not to do it, there's no change in status, there's no additional liability to the village, it's just, just, it's still the village property, whatever. But we think there's really good reasons to do it. And first off, the fact that, I agree that it's very steep and largely inaccessible at this point. But one of the real reasons for doing all of this is to preserve and protect this property, this open space. And the fact that you say you're designated as parkland, that's the nomenclature that you use in the case law. But there's a lot of good reasons for just preserving open space for the environmental and the watershed parts of all that. And there's a controller's report in 2010, which specifically talks about the value of doing this. That parcel was included in the open space inventory that the village did, yes, the village did back in 2001 or so. And therefore, under current ordinances, the village's public policy is to try and protect that property, and this is a good way of protecting that property.
Wait, if I can interrupt you, so it's already protected?
No, it's not, it's not, it's just been designated, it's been designated, it's, it's just a fee, it's only a fee, but it's been identified as an open space parcel. And that means that in future use, or if there was going to be something to be done with it, the village should take steps to protect it. And so we suggest that this is a good way of doing that.
So you're suggesting do it proactively?
Proactively, yes.
Even though there's no, nothing that indicates any?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, look, it's, it is a very steep slope.
It's landlocked.
It's, it's landlocked, there's no doubt about that, but that's not a reason not to protect open space. And again, I know we keep talking about designated this as parkland. And if there's a concern, Larry's concerned about people feeling they got to wander up there. Frankly, if you look at the Worthington Woods map, it's part of the woods map right now, that's part of the map. And one way of doing it would be to designate it formally as parkland, just to give it the added protection, which I think is a really good thing for the community. But say this is, make this area, call that the Worthington Woods, and not necessarily include this, but that, we get that legal protection, which is very important. But you would not direct people to go up there and maybe change your Worthington Woods map to take it along, you know?
So it becomes like Pluto.
No, but what it becomes, no, what it becomes, what it becomes is, is, I, again, we feel it's important for the village, when there is existing open space, to make sure it's protected, and that's a way of adding protection. The other thing I will say this is, this Riveson tax property, which is in between.
Right, called a tax property?
That was what it was called for many years, it was owned by.
That was the name of the company.
I don't know.
It's taxes, like.
Well, it was, that was the trust.
That was the name of the company.
Oh.
Name of the company, definitely. If this is made parkland, and that's made parkland, and if sometime in the future, either the village, or perhaps the land trust, or Lou Bruno himself, wanted to either sell or put a conservation easement on this property, the ability to do so is greatly enhanced if that is parkland and that's parkland. Because you're then, you're then making two parcels of parkland entities. And so there is a future advantage to having this parkland as well. No matter what you might call it, you know, whether you call it part of the Worthington reservoir, parkland, whatever it is, but the fact it's been, has that protection, and it's been drawn within the public trust, that enhances the village's ability to do something with it in the future, Riveson tax, this portion of the tax property, or even Lou Bruno's as well.
Is there another older in here?
So, yeah.
No, that's it.
So what it is, no, you can see, what, what here's Connie.
Why? Okay, that's way bigger than this.
Yeah, you can see it, it stretches up to Mountain Road, and it hooks all the way down here.
Okay, what, what can be done on that parcel there?
I don't, you can walk on it, but not much.
So, no, nothing can be built or developed or changed under its current status, is that correct?
No, under its current, under its current.
Some things on the open space inventory, for instance, it, it, it has to get noticed to the planning board that it's on the open space inventory map. And then it just means maybe pay a little bit more attention to the development there, but it doesn't mean it can't be developed.
That's right, that was rightly.
The village isn't subject to that.
It could be sold.
The village wouldn't be subject to that.
No, no, but that's, that's what it means to be on the open, she wasn't meant to be part of the space inventory.
That's right.
Doesn't mean the camp building, so the village owns it, the village wanted to do something.
Right.
You just, it's open space, you can just look at it from.
Yeah, no.
You could, I, well, yeah, what you could physically, there's no access to it really off, off the road, this is all private property. I, I think there'd never be any realistic reason to do what the deed defines it as.
People must walk over this guy's.
No, no, I'm not, I never suggested that.
No, that was a joke.
We were, it's an internal joke.
So if you look at, if you look at the current Worthington Woods map, what it shows is, this is part of the Worthington Woods, that's all part of the Woods. There is a pathway drawn across this parcel here, and there's actually a walking path that I've taken. You could do that, it's not really maintained or stuff like that. And again.
Oh, wait, this is.
Topography? No, it's over, it's over county property on Sawmill.
It's like their right of way to the, the highway?
Yeah, so what, so what you'll see here, if you look right here, this property right there, if you look on the Worthington Woods map, there's a dotted line that goes like that from there to there, that's, this is county property. And you just, you're kind of walking on a slope a little bit.
Along the side there. So there needs public access to that, your parcel?
Yeah, whether it's public access, or just simply somebody marked a dash on a map, I don't know.
There's a trail in there.
There's a trail.
People walk on the trail, but it gives you a.
And there we have it, somebody goes in there with a chainsaw and cuts it out.
But do we, are we clearly saying that it is not necessary to walk over private property to get?
Well, it's not necessary to walk over private property if you walk across this county property there.
But the counting has not ever said, hey, you guys can walk across.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't either. I'm not even sure how it made it on the original map, which was done, you know, it would.
But, but.
If I just go back.
Continue to establish it as a right of way.
Yeah. If I can go back to, again, the whole reason we were.
You're talking about property.
Was to protect this property. And this, designated this as park, regardless of whether you bring it within the name of this park here or not, that protects that property. And that is an, and it brings with it the public trust doctrine, and I think that is, that is a good thing for the board to do. There's a lot of reasons to protect open space generally, whether or not it's accessible, whether you think it's a normal park. And that's what we would, we believe would make sense here.
Great. Listen, it's there, you do have to keep in mind that the more attention, the more we do, the more will be expected. You know, people aren't going to just, there's going to be a lot of extra paying attention. And we're, we're responsible for it now, but when you bring this out and you dedicate this new area, just remember, it, it won't come without added cost to you for maintenance. Because the more people that use it, the more things that happen, the more we may have to go back. Right now, our ability to get back there is very limited.
I have the idea, this is where the village could turn it into a goat park.
A what park?
A goat park. It's a low country.
Oh, weird, so do you share, do you guys share the same reservations about this? I'm, I'm just not sure.
About Worthington?
Yeah.
No, I think I'm the only one that has reservations here.
Didn't you just say you had reservations also?
Well, you, you mentioned something that, you know, kind of hit a chord. When you, you said that, you know, if it's there, we're, and it's publicized as being the park, and people try to get to it, and we're saying it's dangerous at the same time, you know, that, that you're kind of opening. I, I, I think, I still think it should be in there and protected. I think what might have to come with it is like the parcels that we have some rules, specific rules we have to have for it, that may have to have its own special set of rules.
And so can I just say this, that, that we, we strongly feel that as open space, it should be protected. And whether, again, whether or not you call it part of the park that you're creating here or not, and therefore kind of keep it off people's radar screen, I care less about that. What I care about is taking existing village open space that is wooded area, that has an environmentally sensitive value to it, and protect it.
I think the thing I hate from this that, and aside from, I think, again, simplifying it, it would be so cool to make this a park. I just believe that, okay? The fact that RPAC, the Woods Committee, Chet's group, residents, I think all support the concept we've put out in front of you, that says a lot, you know? That, that, that we all, and I think, I think, again, the protection and use, and making, I keep coming back to it, but that's what it should be about. And, and there are people who, again, think we have plans to come to you to do all these types of development, and this will really help say, no, it's not an idea, we have more important things to be dealing with. This is a park, we're just going to stay a park.
Yeah, let me be clear, I completely support everything you've said, but the rest, the only question.
Yeah, and, and I don't have a good answer for you.
I think we have all the information we need, I was just kind of deciding now, I think we should call it Larry's reservation.
Exactly. Now, now you know.
It's a hideaway.
Now you know my motives. So, so in all seriousness, I think what, what, what I'm taking away from all this is that this is probably less about, it's less in the purview of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, and more in your purview. Because you're not, you're not being pushed to turn this into a park with a capital P. You're being pushed to preserve this and make sure that it stays preserved going forward.
Yes.
And that's not a recreation question necessarily, it's an open space question and a future potential use question. And so that's what you have to consider.
Correct, I agree, and I think we've heard.
But the rest of it's all, I think we're all, you're all in agreement on it.
So simultaneously, at the same time, you could say, we could say, or we could decide, that this, in this yellow, is a park, and this gets a certain status to be protected, but isn't in the park. So you could do those two things simultaneously, and thus avoid this whole idea of, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm not crazy about the fact that you really can't get to.
I think we can look at it as a completely separate issue, we just want to preserve this and not have it part of this, exactly.
Right.
I, I, so can I just make one of the things clear from our point of view, that, and I don't want to overly complicate this, but when we first came to the board, and we were talking about this more than area, we also advocate for having it be designated as passive parkland, and I realize that is.
Right, I remember.
And, and we continue to believe both that it is consistent with the use, it's actually required under the villagers' agreements. There's a court order that says parkland has to be only passive parkland. And, and for all the reasons that we outlined before, and I'm more than willing to outline again, in kind of a letter of support, we feel strongly, going to your question about how do you figure out?
I got to interrupt, because I want to make sure.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
You can go back to your point. RPAC and most of the Woods people who were in attendance do not feel the word passive should be used in any of this. We feel that calling it a park is protection enough for, for the village, and that passive opens up other doors, which could be problematic, as to how you define it. And even though there may be some definitions that are used in some areas, you will get, I'll just throw one thing at you. I can line up this room, and on this side of the room, put people who tell you that biking is passive, and put that side of the room, and people will tell you that biking destroys the woods. So the word passive to us is an unnecessary and potentially problematic word. Parkland in our view is all you need, and enough, and I think Mary Ann even pointed out that in, in, in the document that Chad's referring to, if you go through it, passive isn't used every single time. It was used in certain parts, but it wasn't continuous.
Seen it custom.
Right, there were, there were times, so I, I think you could use those words the way you want to use them. But, but we are not in any way in favor of you using the word passive on any of this land.
But you are.
We are, and, 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 and I will, more than willing to summarize again, and it's written for everybody, why. But we also just want to point out, another thing that we, going back to your question about how do you determine more broadly how to use all this stuff? How to use the woods, given the different natures of it? Secondly, we think that some, the village should, in the future, consider doing what Hastings is doing. And that is doing a, an assessment of the woods. They got a state grant under the D E C to do that assessment, that's going on right now, the Hillside Woods. And they're hoping to come out of that with a better understanding how to use it, and to fit Joe's request, how do you maximize use of it? And, you know, where is it, where is it, so if you protect it or not. And so that's another thing that we think is a good thing for the board, not necessarily as part of designated as a park, but thinking future about how do you make sure it's properly being used, is a good idea.
So if the code definition of passive applies, is it a state term? Where, where does that, if we use it or don't use it?
Sometimes it says it has to be passive parkland and can only, sometimes it's specified. It doesn't, it's, it's not a term that has any definition. No, that doesn't have any definition. Sometimes it's defined, they say passive, and you can only do this, this, and this. Sometimes it does not.
There has to be a connection when you use the word to what you're putting in that, so.
So when we make the rules and regulations, you know, from advice from everybody about the uses of the park, we decide.
Yeah, like I think it was Joe, was, was Joe, you, they're just the one who said that some people say biking is passive, I did not, so, you know.
But you're biking.
But you could, you could, you could define it, I mean, and, you know, and, yeah, it would have to be reasonable.
Changing your rules is easy for you to do by a local law. What Chad is encouraging you to do is to do something that is less easy for future preservation. So that's the difference.
Right, I, I think I understand.
We, we, I mean, but, so you know what happened after the last time we met here at a work session? Is the conversation that night was that the board was not particularly interested in, in pursuing the passive designation. They were interested in making sure these lands were protected as parkland, and that's what the, and so that's what RPAC worked on. We're not suggesting we reopen it, but Chad wanted to reopen it, and that's, that's the debate.
I want to reopen, I just want you to advocate.
Yeah, no, 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 that's clear.
Provide me with a review of what that was, which I was trying to.
And you can, because you, you clearly used the word, you could tell us, again, you have told us, and you provide us with a lot of information.
I, I will say this, that there are current laws passed by this village, specifically zoning, the 1989 zoning law, that deals with the watershed, that requires that, before anything can change in that watershed, if the, and I've got the language here, it has to be for, consistent with passive use. So that language has been used by the village in other termini. When the village made, or the village made this part, parcel, it originally said it had wages for passive use. So it has been something that the village, that's, that has changed slightly, but that is something the village has done before. There is a specific definition in the intermunicipal agreement the village has with the county, it specifies what that is. So, again, I, you know, I, I just want to be very clear, our position on that issue.
I'm just trying to imagine something that is recreational, protecting it as basic open space, and it's recreation, and then all passive.
Baseball field.
Well, baseball field.
Ah, okay.
Baseball field.
You have to make the, the field.
And the activity that happens on the field.
If you play wiffle ball in the woods.
People say soccer field.
Yeah, right, that would not be.
We're going to put the wiffle ball field at Worthington Farm.
Everything's on hill, everything's on hill.
Listen, you guys, I, 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 listen, I, first of all.
You're going to talk about farms.
Yeah. Well, on this, again, I, I want, I think we've met what you asked us to do. I know you have some decisions to make. You know, we're comfortable, we gave you a lot to think about. We appreciate all the input we got from everyone. I'm extremely grateful to Larry for his patience, making sure, I did this, I did this in a way that, you know, was following what you had set. I appreciate the public for all they did to help with that. And, and I don't think we lose here, you know, whatever your decision is.
There's a lot of.
Great, we appreciate all that. Your hard work on this is, I think some of you might be a little bit of a laborer of love, but it's, I mean, I also find the history really interesting, like, funny, I'm a little bit.
So, so we, is it this in some way, shape, or form? What's the next step? What is the next step?
We will, we will go through the recommendation and develop either, whatever the mechanism is, whether it's a resolution or a local law, whatever the process is to designate the parcels that need to be designated as parkland, we'll come up with that in, in detail and turn it into something you can act on.
Through the map?
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll try to key it. Change it to everything.
Is this, is the consensus that this would not be included? Because I didn't get all.
I don't even know.
Can we stop thinking about that?
Yes, you can think about it. That's the easiest thing to do.
You know, I think dedicating it to parkland, but not making it.
Not part of the park.
Yeah, but it's in the bottom.
That's wrong, that's wrong meaning as well.
That's probably the.
Take it off.
The only thing is.
I hate the map, yeah.
The only thing I'm talking, that, yeah, the only thing that I think that is of interest, that there is a maintained trail that's on. Well, remember, if you do this, we want, we're going to need to redo all of our maps. So the opportunity will be there to make the change, but we need to do it. So right now, we've been sitting on a lot of stuff until we see what direction you're going to go with this. This will start a lot of walls rolling downhill, if you will.
The trail is not maintained by us.
People using, I think, for people who's talking about.
God knows, but there's somebody out there with a chainsaw maintaining that trail.
Worthington's their ancestors.
Worthington's their ancestors.
We have on videotape one of the equipment boxes that see, that's a park moving on its own.
I did see that, yeah.
So there are ghosts around.
Oh, sorry.
Larry saw it, so he could tell.
No, I, I have an open mind.
Halloween.
Three hundred pound equipment box moved away, moved away from the wall of the bathrooms.
Did it go back?
Nope, no.
Well, someone wanted to get it out.
Okay.
And I don't believe in that at all.
Thank you.
Bishop Johnson to go like Mars.
Yes, we're, thank you, Chad, thank you again.
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate your hard work.
Like the birthday.
Thank you.
So the drones, the drone issue has been really a difficult one for us. We had talked about it well over a year ago. We're lucky enough to have two attorneys on our PAC, Matt Spencer and Michael Smith, who I know most of you know, are fine gentlemen and great guys. And, and, you know, with Rick and I trying to push, you know, to come up with something, we just could not come up with anything. Michael Smith attended a lawyer's conference.
Let me go.
And left there more confused about drones.
I did one online for municipal officials. I literally do last thing when I was Googling myself.
My son took a course at Albany last year, and his professor told him, this was in May, he said, when you come, when we come back to school in the fall, my curriculum will be totally different, because every day something changes with this. So here's where we are with it right now. We're honest enough to say to you, we don't know what to do, because there, there's a problem. But we had a dangerous situation on July 4th. On July 4th, there was a drone that was somewhere twenty to fifty feet above our heads, flying on the water side of the park, back and forth between where we were set up with the fireworks and the fire department, and going back deep into the crowd. And the police, according to the chief, said there was no action they could take. The park was packed at this time. Had that drone fallen, someone would have gotten hurt. And, and we worry about that. We've had drones fly back and forth at Cedar Hudson Park, over the field, while people are playing. You could also, you know, I think the first time drones actually became something we were worried about, if I'm not mistaken, you saw one near the, near, close to the tracks, which.
No, I saw the video online.
Okay. So, so it was something.
Chasing the train down the track.
So, we don't know where to go with it, but here's what we're asking you to do right now, until Mary Ann and, and the police department, we, we would like drones banned from flying on any village park, and to not be allowed to launch or land in any of the parks. Because we, we don't, we don't even know how to deal with it. And we talked to the chief again about it prior to, um, Rocktoberfest, and we asked what would happen if we had a drone issue. He said, there's nothing I can do. But there's nothing he can do, certainly nothing rec people can do. And, and I'm not exaggerating, and Rick, you were with me, right? I mean, it was mocking us, basically, sitting above us, you know. And Officer Toolan actually looked up at it and did this, and it turned and left. But, you know, that thing came down, I mean, it wasn't a, and this wasn't a, you know, a little thing like this. This was a, a big drone, and, and someone would have got hurt. We don't know where it was being flown from. I still think it was from within the park, but I couldn't tell you that, because I was dealing with my own problems, because we were within a half an hour of the show when all this was happening.
I can, I can tell you one thing I did learn from all of my Googling, as well as the online thing, most of the, the laws I've seen that they've allowed, you have, it has to be within visual sight of it. So you can't just like fly away. You know, that's, that's one of the rules that, that the, you know, the FAA has not shut down.
But in a park, right, in a park, when people aren't aware it's above them, you know. But there's a halfway point that I keep thinking about, is that, you know, the park, like, uh, to say a blanket of all the parks, to me, is a problem, because where does anyone in the village then validly fly these things?
On section nine.
Oh, Worthington Farms.
The golden dragon park? So, I, I mean, I understand the limitations during public events, that you really have a crowd, a safety issue. But then again, it seems like I'd rather have them flying at Madison Park during the day, let's say, than flying down, you know, River Road or Harbin Road, where, you know, you've got a lot more other issues. Well, before we can take a position on it, I think as a department, someone has to tell us what is the consequence, and what happens when someone is flying it where we feel or staff feels it's, it's problematic.
Could I just say, I actually have, you could, and I, I, because I, I had said to draft law more than a year ago around about this, that I feel comfortable that if you wanted to, and I'm not sure that all the, all the board agrees, that you could ban from any public spaces, not even the park, you could do it over village property, ban them being watched, landed, or flown over. And, and, and that, that would be a, a valid restriction.
Over, over village property, meaning village buildings or village easements?
Well, and you probably want to do it over parks, and, uh, you might want to, I don't know if you have other means of property, such parks you want to, because everybody's saying, oh, you can't do it. The truth is that you, you can, from all I can see. And there, everybody says it changes every day, and thus, the law has been really very static on this.
It's, it's not, you can't do it, it's, do you want to do it?
No, no, but people, yeah, no, 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 I said.
Yeah, okay.
If you want, yeah, if you want. You, you, you may not want it.
But there's steps you have to take to be able to do it. You can't just buy one and go fly it down in the park.
Well, no, you, no, I'm talking about banning it, that's, yeah, but no, that's right. Right now, if you are flying one, there are rules.
Yes.
I mean, that's not going to be very easy for, that police department is not going to, whatever, they, and that's like too much.
The police department, which is what the city does a lot, is they, if they think you're creating public danger, they just give you reckless endangerment.
We have other laws that say you can't do that.
To me, that's easy, you know, so if we, you know, want to worry about a Fourth of July or Rocktoberfest, I think that's, you know, that's almost, you know, and the funny thing is, is that, so the case law, and it's the New York, there's a N Y U law professor who says they can charge you with that. You might get out of it if you go to court, but, you know, obviously the penalty is that you're paying on the.
But actually, the FAA regulations specifically say about them, that you can operate a small unmanned aircraft over a human being unless that human being is protected. I mean, so there are laws that permit, but, but that's, that's under the, the federal law.
Is one of the laws that you cannot fly them within a certain distance from airports?
Yeah, 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 there's, there, yes.
So is a heliport an airport? Because one of the people, one of the conversations with us is that there are two in Rockland County, which would be, I think it was five miles of what we were told.
Yeah, but the, the, the problem is, Joe, I mean, if, if you want to regulate them, my regulate, my suggestion is that you come up with a local regulation. It's very difficult.
And that's what we're asking.
For, it's very difficult for the police to, to apply that.
And I think, I think the middle ground that kind of covers what Mark does, is you have to have it approved by the clerk or the recreation department, because you think about, there are, there are people that never, what's his name, there's a guy who does it, Paul, yeah. So when he does it.
He does it the right way.
He does it the right way. So to me, if, if, you know, we want to say unless you have a permit or something, uh, which basically preapproval that, hey, I want to, I want to fly my drone Saturday. Well, Saturday is Rocktoberfest, you can't. But, you know, Saturday, December 13th, I don't think anyone even know you when. You know, so I think that that might be, it, it's a little more complicated because of that, it's a step. But I think it kind of covers some of what you're talking about.
I was thinking permit for use.
Permit for each, each time.
Yes.
Or conceivably, you could block it up, and here's a calendar where I might.
Yeah, here's a seven days I want to fly it next month.
We want to use it to chase the geese.
That's.
Well, that's exactly right.
That's right.
Listen, don't think we haven't thought about it, but, but, but again, on the Fourth of July.
No, but that's, that's the thing.
I'm, I'm telling you, I felt we had an unsafe situation.
So in this, in this possible proposed law that we're fiddling around with, wouldn't you black out all these groupings, like Fourth of July, Rocktoberfest, other major days? And just say, if we have, nobody can do that on those days.
Well, I think what they're suggesting is something different.
But, but you also.
There's two ways to do it. One is to say you can do it, but not on these days. The other is, is to say.
You have to apply.
You have to apply for a permit to do it. And then, then you, then you don't give a permit if it's graduation or October.
But I guess, yeah.
With the specific exclusions, you know, you can.
No, the problem is.
That's not a permit.
Ross.
They're not allowing you to fly it.
No, 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 they're talking about a permit for each year.
Oh, always.
So you want to use it on Saturday.
I finished studying pollinators, now I'm going to study the drones.
So, so, so think of it this way, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about how much, um, you're, you know, you guys, you're kind of throwing out a possibility, and I, I'm wondering how much administrative tasks this creates. You're creating a layer of, you got to do this. Just think, think this way through. You as an individual apply to be, um, an approved user by what you say, and what, I don't know, the training you have, or what you sign, or whatever. And then there are certain blacked out days, of which there can be added to that schedule, as you know, certain things are. Maybe you say it's always on, you know, Saturday after two in the parks, and certain, I don't know, what you do. But then it's not as administratively dense as, um, having each time, each person. It's a little less controlled, but it's still a lot more control than what you have now.
Right, that's what I was trying to get. So you can blackout, you can require a permit, but you can start out by blacking out certain dates, so you don't have to deal with requests for those.
So, no, that's different from what Connie said, I think, because Connie's saying, if I understand, you don't have to go for a permit at all.
First, you do go for a permit, you as an individual.
Oh, just as saying.
Yes, because drones fly it. Go in, yeah. I, I, Brian Smith applied.
I have certified that your permit's licensed.
And then you can, you can fly it.
Depends on how high they can go.
At the times and places that are designated in our law. But you don't have to come in every time. Maybe in the next year you do.
Yeah, I, I, because if, on a daily or each occasion thing, you know, you'd have even more work for my staff and.
No, I know, you want to.
Can I, can I just, um, I just want to dial it back a little bit, because I think the, the main goal of what I wanted to get out of tonight is to understand what direction the board wanted to go with this. Not the specifics necessarily, because obviously specifics, there's a lot of variables here, um, and things we don't know about maybe, or we have to research. But, um, it sounds to me like the board is, doesn't want to just do a blanket ban.
I don't, well, I would, but I don't think that's right.
Okay, oh, no, I mean, okay.
Like I said, I'd rather have the stuff flying in the park on safe days, rather than flying just randomly in the village.
So that's the summary, the summary is, you, you would like to allow it, but only on safe days.
By safe people.
By, by safe people. Whatever that mechanism is, we'll figure out what the right mechanism is to do that, and how we can legally do it correctly, and whatever, but that's.
Amazon's going to be delivering.
Yeah.
And Revenge Barbecue is going to be delivering ribs, but they're under.
Well, they better have their permit.
In favor.
So.
To your.
Is that it?
Not your.
No, it's not? What do you need?
I mean, I have no, I really don't have a sense of, well, first of all, whether, whether you want a permit pre-juicidate, or whether you want a permit with blackout dates, or.
Well, but I think we, well, I think we have to maybe internally give that a little bit, you know, as to what works.
Well, you said, am I ready? I'm not ready. No, I'm not ready to write something. I need more.
I, I agree.
Do we carry extra liability, once we start allowing people to fly it over the parks? Should we see maybe if, um, um, Neymar or Spain have had situations in other communities that they service, where they let us know if it's not working?
I talked to.
I, I read their articles, it was very helpful.
Yeah, and I called, I talked to Wade today, just because an article was from a couple years ago. He had something contradictory, and, but, but he, he, he's very comfortable with you can regulate it, you know, and, yeah, you can.
Yeah, that is good to know.
Starting point. Yeah, I know, everybody acts like you can't. Oh, this is, um, you know, um.
Just tell me what we've been told, yeah.
Well, it's wrong.
Well, yeah, I think there is a preclusion, but it only happens in certain, and there's other.
Over four hundred feet.
Right, exactly. So then it starts to get complicated, which is why people write it off.
I think it's a P L for.
No, interestingly, there's, the only, the only municipality in Westchester County that, that, that has a law, is Lewisboro. Is where?
Lewisboro.
Oh, yeah, it is. And then, actually, you see on the township, had a pretty good one, like, what's Lewisboro?
They're managing all national parks, I'm looking at that.
I do know that. Yep, they're paying.
Yeah, there's some parks in much of D C, much of the D C area.
With some airports.
Here, here's what Lewisboro is, uh, no person shall launch or land, I, oh, just by the way, are you talking about just drones, or what, rock and roll controlled airplanes?
Yeah. R C's?
Those two?
Yeah.
Okay. So no person shall launch or land any airborne remote controlled aircraft. Including but not limited to model airplane solid.
Including.
Sorry.
Okay.
No person shall launch or land any airborne remote controlled aircraft, including but not limited to model airplanes, model helicopters, drones, rockets, or gliders in any public recreational facilities, except for in certain of their parks during the months of December, January, February, and March, provided that such craft is registered with Parks and Recreation Department. And then it says it doesn't apply to emergency services.
So they have.
They do register you.
They register you, and it's, I guess they say December through March, because they figure out how many people are using the parks.
Sure. I can see Madison Park.
And then certain parks, they allow it all the time.
Yeah, well, that seems like a framework.
I'm going to call, I'm going to call the superintendent there and see what kind of.
Lewisboro? Yeah, this was passed just in 2018.
That sounds like a reasonable framework.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
I think we might also consider time restrictions, if we are allowing dog walking at certain times.
Yeah.
To start the drones after the dogs are gone.
Ask Lewisboro if the, if the dogs and the drones have a problem with each other.
Good. Short term, no. If there's something, is there a position we're taking? Well, I, I think what Brian just said was the thing that if it's reckless endangerment, it can be charged.
Okay.
Well, then also, is it, doesn't, doesn't your, your parks, you know, it's already safe, you can't even motorize vehicles.
Correct.
So you can't let anybody launch them.
Right. We need to make sure that, we need to know that when, when the police are called, that they know what they're enforcing. That's been problematic. R C's, which, well, maybe, maybe it is a lot like them, but I mean, a drone can be launched from outside the park, and you'll never know who's operating that.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's just.
Right, right. At least it gives you some measure of protection.
Yeah.
Well, this is launched and landed, it doesn't say anything about the flying.
You do have to get a jamming device, though.
Reading this quickly, Joe, it's like it's only airports, not helipads.
That's what, that was the new thing. We don't know what helipads counted, but that's somebody told me they know.
You've just confirmed that.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck.
Okay, Richard Park, right in the law.
By the way, outside, starting to look really nice.
Looks good, brick's great, I love it.
Never out of it.
And I'll take care of guns.
We're back by Christmas.
Yeah, exactly. Probably.
It's back.
Yeah, they ran out of it.
How's that possible?
I always take these up for my walkway. Every, he's got six.
It'd be.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it missed out.
Did you say it'd be important?
No, I know what I'm talking about. Breaks missing.
Okay.
He's missing a couple of bricks. Parking.
Parking.
Oh, God.
Really? Anyone here who's here for parking, thank you for waiting.
Okay.
We should put a parking app on that, that.
Make it.
Where they do parks.
We could put parking structures up there.
Yeah.
Actually, this topic is moot, because there is no parking anymore.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
It's all gone.
Not on Main Street anymore.
It's all gone.
We don't know where they're going.
No.
This is like the fast city thing.
I, I keep telling Larry, have you got any complaints today?
No. And the parking is gone and.
Meanwhile, we filmed something somewhere and it's the end of the world, so.
They don't give the filming code this week.
No comment.
No comment.
Look, we got complaints?
No, not, it was fine out in Clifton Place.
What about the one?
The one here was made a little bit more complicated by the fact that, that just as they were getting set up, a box truck got stuck on North Buckout Street and created basically gridlock down there. So, so.
Yeah, kidding me.
So after I got screamed at by the owner of a commercial property on the other side of the tracks, I found, I found out that the, the delivery truck that got stuck was actually going to that property. In a bit, in a bit of irony.
How did that truck get stuck? It was too big for the.
Couldn't make a turn because.
At the end of.
At the end of North Buckout.
I'm watching the film.
Anyway, there you have it.
Was traffic being directed around that?
No, I think some was, but not, you know, it was, it was kind of sporadic. Anyway, I don't want to get into that, not a fun morning. Okay, so, parking regulations, so, you know, we've been, we've been through some of these changes, they've had a variety of iterations over the, over the last couple of years, but the, the summary of where we are right now on the thinking is, is largely attached to the agenda here. You have, you have a copy of all that there? Okay. So, I mean, really, ju- jumping down to the changes, which is the second page, the, well, the first change is easy because you already made it, which is to change the parking on Main Street.
Good question, I know that came co- at the same time as all of the elimination of all parking on Main Street, but was there any perceived difficulty or?
No, I'm not even sure all the signs are deployed yet, so it's kind of in transition. No, I mean, there's a lot of signs to be updated.
Nobody cares, basically, they.
Yeah, no, it was, it was pretty straightforward.
Only the ones, not even on the train.
So then the next.
We're gonna ask them.
And I'm not necessarily gonna go in order because some of this is, is a bit of a windy tale, but, so, you know, a lot of this stems from the original desire to eliminate overnight parking on the restrictions on the side streets. So we are still recommending that overnight parking be allowed throughout the downtown. It's, it's kind of being allowed informally now, but until the law gets changed.
By the, just to be sure, you mean, just streets off of Main Street?
Streets off of Main Street, yes.
And anywhere else in the village?
Right, and Main Street itself, which already had permitted overnight parking.
Excuse me, and that will, that will also just, not just residents, but business owners who have vehicles that they use for their business now will be able to park them.
Business owners.
Hello.
Business owners that have vehicles, what, that, that, that park them overnight, they'll, they'll continue to be allowed.
What they're doing.
Right, I mean, that's not, that's not prohibited unless you change that.
Which, which is why the topic's a lot to talk about.
Well, that's a, that's a different topic, yeah, probably a little bit different audience, but, or segmented audience. So, so overnight parking would be permitted. At the same time, we, we talked about creating more turnover of spaces on the side streets to encourage more turnover in the, in the business district. The, the way we had proposed to do that was to, to convert all of the six hour spaces, initially all of the six hour spaces along the side streets of Main Street, which are all six hours now, convert those to two hour spaces, similar to the Main Street spaces. The discussion had been that, that there is need for a certain inventory of six hour spaces, especially in the vicinity of the railroad station, for overflow parking that apparently is going on, and we know that firsthand, actually, many hands. And so the, so the suggestion in this proposal is to keep, to not change the hourly restrictions that are currently six hours, not change them on both Buckout Street and Cottonet Street, the two lowest streets down the hill.
You don't mention Astor.
Yeah, we're putting it.
I don't believe Astor is, I don't believe that most of Astor is six hour currently, I think it's mostly two hour.
You're right.
North, north Astor in front of the businesses.
Little commercial area.
Right, north, north Astor in front of the businesses is, is, is regulated almost identically to the way the rest of Main Street is, which is two hours, right?
So should, should that be mentioned here?
Well, it's not a change, but I, but.
Maybe you should say, Astor unchanged.
Yeah.
The one thing I will say on that.
I mean, I have ideas on this too, so as you're changing.
But to me, the, the question on the Astor Street, I think one of the commercial buildings is being converted to, converted to residential, so is there still a need to keep that all two hour versus making it six hour?
Well, this is a lot of two spots as well.
Sure, sure, but they're making, they're making a, something of parking inside.
But don't, didn't they ask for, like, parking behind?
So they're taking two street parking.
They're going inside.
What are you talking about? That new development may have things underneath their building.
I thought they were, I thought, right?
Was that withdrawn?
I heard they said, oh, well.
Was there somebody trying to get to the court?
So.
Sorry, the judge in there?
Yeah, the judge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the issue is, wasn't the issue, was architectural issues, right, engineering issues, right?
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't count on that.
Okay, so never mind, that is.
I don't know what's going on. You, you, you can, if you all agree on that, that's fine, but I would propose that, that the Astor Street ones that are right there by the railroad that come in straight in, those be six, change them from two to six, those are the better ones for the train, and then alleviate, I mean, I, you know, that you'll hear from the public about taking two of the streets, of the side streets, just two, and allowing those two to be the ones with six hours, rather than finding six hour spaces elsewhere. So I'm not, I'm, I mean, we can propose whatever.
Well, this is what it says, I'm missing, it says there's two, only two streets.
I know, those two streets, I don't think that they should be isolated as having six hour spots, whereas the other ones change to two hours, the other side streets.
Well, then you have, you have not enough inventory, there's only like three or four parking spaces down by.
Right, so it's, it's just a different needs, so we talked about that small lot that could be used after the commuters, when it's not as crowded, after like two o'clock, we talked about the spaces in front of the library, we talked about finding spaces other than on those two side streets, so, I, you know, we'll have a public hearing about this, but, you know, we can.
Well, you can't lose the inventory, I mean, my, I, once you start getting, there are a lot of people, Connie, that take the train in during the middle of the day, and you can't lose the inventory, unless we can find them from somewhere, I would be a hundred percent against eliminating.
Well, I understand that, but I, I think, you know, you know how to listen to the public that lives there and.
Well, you have to listen to the rest of the village as well, that needs the facilities.
This is, this is, you listen to everybody, but.
Right, but some of the stuff, you just, people, we want to encourage people to take the train in, so unfortunately, if you live near the train station, you know, that's a.
I mean, that's, that's a lovely argument, but you can also say, you know, you chose to live far from the train, you understood that you either have to be locked off or you buy a, you know, waiting line to get.
No, there are six hour, there's six hour parks, and you, there are.
Right, so there.
There are, so anyone that's made a decision.
I'm happy to have you guys put this out as how the majority thinks here, but I don't agree with it.
I almost take some of Connie's proposals and consider making additional six hour spots.
I think that's a great.
Yeah, make more six hour.
Well, make it as now.
But I just don't think, I mean, there's someone, I mean, I'm talking about my own book, because I now use those six hour spots multiple times a week, and I, I often have to work all the way down to Buckout, you know, they're not, there's not enough now.
But I'm telling you, it's, it's competing.
Depends on the time they.
So.
But I'm not sure adding spaces on Dutcher and Ecker and on up, it really helps, helps the situation.
You can make it confusing and you, you can spread the pain around and, and, and make the, you know, have them, have them come up or change them, I, I just don't, I, make more, but don't, don't single out those two streets.
But I don't think those two streets.
I know, but you're singling them out once you change.
But I just don't think right now, there's a lot of people parked for the train on Dutcher.
Right, exactly, we can, we can eliminate one problem by changing the six hour on the side streets.
You can make people walk further, you know.
Unless we can find enough inventory, so.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought over the last two years, we worked hard on doing that.
But where?
Well, I've just, I just named you certain things.
No, but those places are, which I meant during the day and they're restricted access because.
Right, they're, we talked about Metro North has, has at least, we have at least thought that they are not necessarily opposed to allowing non-permitted people after a certain time during the day, in the afternoon.
Is there any spots?
And how many people go into the city at three in the afternoon?
I know, so make it that, from three, if they would, if they would bring that, then you've created spots for the afternoon people, so there are lots of ways to do it.
And that happens already after six, I mean, effectively, if you're smart, a lot of people have, and you know, you look at the parking in front of the library, which is two hours until seven PM, you park there at five and you've got three, you're in the city, so all the parking spaces in front of the library.
There are the DPW spots and.
Those are generally filled, full during the day.
I know, so there, there, is that to say that the needs of the people who've decided that they don't want to, I don't know, take an Uber or we have a van that takes people or picks them up or you get somebody to drop you off, that those needs, those people are greater than the needs of the people that live there on Lewisboro?
The people that live there have lived under these exact same situations since they moved here.
But they, they also, they've had, they've had restaurants with employees, they've had a lot more people crowding that, and they will be crowded only on those two, two places.
And it totally, I will tell you that I've never had a hard, today I went to the post office at, well, noon, and I got a parking space on, right across the street from the post office, there were four other empty parking spaces on that street.
Right, and I look around and I see spaces here and there, but I think it's important to listen to the public.
Sure, but we can't just listen to some of the public either, Connie.
Well, no, but we're listening, I think all those points of view need to be heard.
Connie, for a second, what is the complaint from Buckout Street about the six hour parking?
That.
And, you know, so, because you've got to get, you're gonna have to have some kind of, you know, you obviously have to have some kind of parking in front of the post office that allows.
That they can't, right.
Turnover, right?
Right, that they can't park when they come home from work.
Okay, but then, why does that six hour hit, hit that though?
If you stop parking enforcement at, if it's two hour parking and I, and the parking enforcement stops at six, I just park there at four o'clock and then I'm on three, so it doesn't really, it doesn't allow them to get a parking spot from work, they come home from work and they've already, all the three, you know, everything's, so you're not solving the problem.
If you don't go at, you know, if you go at three thirty, what's the chance you're gonna come chucking in?
We've talked about this a number of, so let's just have a public hearing on it and let, we know.
So, just for.
What their points of view are.
Just for information, one of the pieces of information I sent along to Larry Lonkey when, knowing that he wasn't gonna be here, he had a few questions, and one of the questions was, what is the total number of spaces that are six hour spaces under this proposal that would be available as six hour spaces? So I'm leaving out Astor Street completely, just for argument's sake, since that could be a moving target, but including North and South Buckout, North and South Cottonet, and then Main Street between those streets, is a total of 151 spaces that are all six hour spaces. So, his, his sense was that that's a lot of inventory. Now, there's a lot of demand, yes, but there's also a lot of spaces, and we, my sense and his sense was to, that that didn't need to be expanded up the hill in any meaningful way, just to make it seem like you were avoiding pigeonholing two streets, you know what I mean? And that's, that's the way I feel about it as well, but again, I'm just laying out those numbers.
Have you seen her from the calling as well?
Yep.
And I think, I, I think there are several other things that go along with this, there's the complaints about enforcement that is, is an important component to this, that if people park there and go to the train and they're gone for three or four days and they simply, that car just stays on Buckout Street, it's not a resident, and then it's just overlooked on those lower streets.
I will speak anecdotally, because it's the only information I have, is I've gotten three tickets there, one was with alternate side of the space, one, Kieran moved it to the alternate side after, I guess we tried to do it after four hours or whatever, so I know we haven't.
I think alternate side is one that might be enforced, but the other, the other ones aren't, I mean, I, I've certainly heard this, again.
There's also, I mean, we have, Larry and I have spoken about, and there's automated ways of doing it with pay per use and things like that.
And that would be, that, because it's combined with a GPS and a timestamp, and it automatically alerts you when you drive by if the car's moved or hasn't been moved, so.
But the anecdotally thing, you know, if, if the reports are, I've watched the tires not being marked for the six hour, you know, rule here, and they're simply not being parked, you know, I know because somebody's car that I know never got marked, and I looked at it and it was not marked, so there was no enforcement, so, you know, anecdotal is what it's worth, but, so.
Well, if you, a couple of things, I know that it's, I would say it's not, that it's not enforced, but it's, it's irregular, it's inconsistently enforced, because I have noticed that myself in my own car, sometimes it's marked, sometimes it's not, and I know that after a particular time of day, it's almost, doesn't make sense to mark on the six hour spots anymore.
So you can.
But if you had an automated process where you could just, you know, walk by and just drive through.
Well, I think this would go over a lot better if there was an automated process or a much more enhanced objective.
But I do also think it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to do that until we kind of change whole part.
No, no, but what I think it is, is it would stop once in a while this selective enforcement or, you know, because it would say basically, just, you know, your job is to walk up and down the streets and when the thing leaps, write the ticket.
I also, I also didn't run on the site of the original, one of, you know, Larry, there was a, there was another major reason that we started going through this, is when you looked at all the contradictory pages of the code that are layered on top of each other, which Mary Ann did a great job of kind of saying, at this page it says this, on this page it says this, you know, what is, what is the, what is the police, what is the prosecutor, what are you supposed to say is the law when it's different on one page and another? It was appalling, so, we've been trying to change it in my mind for that reason, as much as, you know, I know it came about because of the overnight, but that was something that's been on my mind for a long time.
But that's a much bigger issue than this.
Yes.
Maybe you can deal with this area with these proposed regulations.
Well, that's, this is, that's actually, you're done with it a lot, you know.
This would be, there was, there was taken care of.
As part of those amendments, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what's left to change on that?
Yeah.
You're crossing out a lot of those parts and it would be updated to this, it would do what was the problem.
Can I ask a simple question that I, I know I should know this, and I'm gonna make the assumption, but I just want to be sure I'm wrong, or not wrong, but with a residential parking permit, I mean, you have no, there's no limitations of that.
Do you have a driveway?
Between me.
What are the average of limitations of the residential permit?
Well, they're, they're, right now, I believe, they're seven AM to seven PM, and within that window, you do not need to pay attention to the hourly limits, that's essentially what's.
So you get a free pass.
Except the alternate side.
I just said the hourly limits.
Oh, sorry, I did.
Yeah, the time, the time limits.
Yeah, so there is some consideration for the residents.
Oh, sure, yeah, we, we wouldn't even be able to have this conversation about reducing from six down to two if it wasn't for the residential parking.
So there is some, so the residents have some preference on the side streets, no matter what.
Not if there's no space.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Well, coupled with enforcement and two hour limit, then you, enforcement is not just ticketing, though, enforcement at some point is renewable. You know, at some, or how many tickets does it take before you boot it?
Kind of, again, it's cost of doing business, if you're willing to pay a ticket because you don't have a, a permit to park down there, you can't, you don't want to figure out a different way or get a ride or something else, then.
Right, and we, we're not.
People suffer.
And we're not, we're not booting cars, but even if we were, it's only when you're outstanding on your parking ticket payments, as far as I am aware.
So, I mean, if a car is there, though, for four days and it's got its fourth ticket?
They can, they can tow, they're within their rights to tow, to tow the vehicle.
Maybe.
Police, yeah.
So these are, these are the things that would go along way in going along with these changes. The enforcement, the, the consistent, you know, the changes to make them consistent and the signage being clear.
So I got taken down the alternate side.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the signs, the signs and, you know, that's-
There was a discussion with D P W. that was at least initiated about not having to have as many hours count as alternate side.
Right.
And I think that would also help.
Yeah, we-
Those things could happen, I think this would be less of a, an issue.
Right.
They have to all come together or, you know.
Well, so, I have two other comments, but can you finish what you were saying, gonna say about it?
What, the one thing I did wanna point out that kind of got, got changed along the way is that there, there was a concept here from the very beginning to make the hourly restrictions on Main Street and the side streets be effective, not just from eight A M. to six P M., but from eight A M. to eight P M. And the theory behind that was, was to continue to keep having parking turnover so that you could address the situation about people coming home from their, to their place of residence and being able to find a spot if the parking was continuing to turn over.
But that's not here.
That's not here now because you heard from Joe Clark at Greenfield about the fact that he was in need of looking for places to park his commercial vehicles, which is a whole other topic, on the street after work hours. And there was some sympathy to that in the conversation as it was going on, so the, so that got changed back to six P M. in here. But now you're no, now you're not addressing the other question that you received from residents about finding a place to park when they come home, you know, that, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, because you can't, you know, yeah, that just forces the window down to six. It's just a safe parking period.
Right, which means you can park there from four on, essentially, four o'clock on.
So in a separate effort on our part, we are looking at these commercial vehicles and what change in those rules we wanna make. We discussed that at the last, it's part of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, there was a comprehensive plan recommendation and you said, put it off-
As part of this.
Put it off until this discussion-
So the commercial-
This is what the two recommendations, the two recommendations were, no commercial parking between eight P M. and six A M. on Main Street and the side streets, except where specifically permitted. And then the other one was that commercial parking could be for one hour only.
Come on ahead, young you, take a right.
Between, between six A M. and eight P M. except for providing services of delivery. And that would be for the side streets only. That was-
But we were talking about the size of the vehicle.
Yeah, no, but that, that's the fighting commercial vehicle.
For an hour only during the day, is that what it says?
Well, they had said no commercial parking at all, but then the board, when we discussed it seemed to think it should be for one hour. So you could, commercial parking for one hour only, you're talking six A M. and eight P M.
Because of the fact that we wanted to allow someone to be working on the site, like a plumber?
No, no, no. There's an exception for that. Provided services of delivery. You could be there for four hours. Let's say you were moving somebody in or out, you could be there for four hours. But you could park for only one hour between six A M. and eight P M. That was for the side streets only, that restriction.
That's their lunch break or something?
I, I don't know what the reason was.
I can't remember why.
Originally, we said not at all.
Yeah.
No commercial parking. And then somebody suggested the one hour, I don't, we suggested one hour parking, but we, we got it.
We need a blockchain of these issues. The providence of-
How late was it when we agreed on that?
Yeah, right. We thought about five after ten.
Commercial parking for one hour, I don't know, I mean, but that, that, the, I mean, it seems to me it's not really necessary if you've got the-
The working on the place.
Providing service and delivery.
The only thing it is, is for you-
If you're coming back to your place of business, I mean, you're not your, your office here.
Yeah, you're coming back for lunch.
Burger Jordains, get something to eat.
But, but no.
So, you know, it seems, we can, we can continue to go round and round as we have been doing for many, many months on this, or we can move ahead and open it up for public discussion. One other option to think about, because I was thinking this when I was reading, because we, it's always like unintended consequences or the things you don't anticipate, which sounds like such a good idea until you're actually trying to do it, is, and I don't know if this is possible, can we pass something for a specified time period and reevaluate?
Always reevaluate.
You can always reevaluate, yeah. I mean, the signage, the signage is the tough part, yeah.
Okay, never mind.
It's always changeable.
Yeah, right.
But, but the part of that, that has come home to me in the discussion about the commercial vehicles, Mary Ann, which I'm trying to recall, but I, I walked up and down Main Street and saw the commercial vehicles actually, you know, and I've seen this before, on the sidewalk, because you have to bring the wheels to, to try to bring the back away from the traffic coming down Main Street, but they're not only on the sidewalk, now they're on the, the group, the, the tree wells. So it's just, the size of those vehicles is a big part of the problem for pedestrians, for the traffic getting through, for so many reasons that I, I'm thinking, being more serious about the controls because of that size issue.
Well, you, you didn't really address that because-
You started talking about-
No, no, but because even these changes wouldn't address that on Main, on Main Street, because we can't have the commercial parking at night, but between six A M. and eight P M. there aren't any proposed restrictions on commercial parking.
So how do you have a research?
Chief mentioned, I'm sorry.
No, you have, you have to tread lightly on your restricting of parking of commercial vehicles in the commercial district during commercial hours.
Commercial districts.
No, I mean, that doesn't mean people can go parking on sidewalks and on tree wells. That's a, that's kind of a different issue, but I don't-
Well, actually, they have to park on sidewalks. They're blocking right away.
Unless they were parking on the south side of Main Street where it's parallel park, it's not the-
Right, and then you have to have enough loading zones.
Right, so you don't have the loading zones, then it's impossible. I understand that this is some-
Perhaps, will it be illegal parking to park on the sidewalk?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Yeah.
But they're doing it because they're like a contractor and they're going into a hardware to get something and they're parked up on the, I mean, it happens all the time.
Yeah. So unless you have like a, like the hardware store on the other side of, of Main Street lined up straight, not as a, 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 what do you call this angle? And then you have somebody from the store, a police officer, helping traffic get around so you can see and get out.
So we're using cups on every dealership, so we're talking overtime to do a loading zone?
Yeah, the, the-
It's, he boots regular parking spots and they'd be yellow striped and they'd be loading areas, loading zones only.
We have one by Jordane's.
Yeah, right. And they have, well, they have one up here, it's not really, but it's, I do. So you need some more of those for commercial vehicles.
Right. It sounds to me like part of the issue is that, I could be cautious about, okay, loading zones, changing loading zones and stuff like that or defining new ones until we actually, the other component here is the visibility of the corners.
Yes.
And, you know, so, so it's kind of like a, I would mind if we took the commercial stuff to the side for a second, buddy, and tried to just get the residential, the majority of the residents are-
You can't solve everything at once and let's not, let's not, a great deal of work has not added to this. You've been, you've been, the word patient has been used several times tonight, but I would say again with this, but let's, let's try to at least move ahead with this. There's many connected issues with the commercial stuff. So let's not try to-
We have to get somehow, we have to change the baseline and then tweak, I mean, it's like, you know, it's the new way of doing any kind of development, right? It's like-
We can't, if we try to put this all together, we will, nothing will get done.
So there is, the one component that needs a little bit of development, but at least describe an example of it, is, so, so now you have the central, let's call it the central business district, so the, you know, the Dutcher, Ecker, Ferris, that whole area will now have side streets that are two-hour spaces. There are plenty of employees that work in those businesses that will need to find places to park. We are not suggesting that they go down to the bottom of the hill and find spaces on Buckout Street, don't think that I was gonna say that, because that would defeat the entire previous argument. What this, my suggestion has been is to, to modify the provisions of the residential parking permit law to allow for a limited number of those to be issued to businesses. The, the part that would not be, the part that isn't accounted for by those residential parking permits would be accounted for by the daytime permits being available in the aqueduct parking lot. I think there are, there are spaces available. Right now, it's a little more crowded than usual and I think that's where some of the people are parking. But, but normally, there are some spaces available, so that would, that would take, that, by changing these regulations would take some of those people off of the streets and into the parking lot, which is ultimately a good thing.
Right.
So my question was, I was thinking about this, is, the businesses come in all different sizes, so there were two questions. Because I know you had originally done some parking inventory by three segments and you were talking, you know, obviously, businesses would, employees would prefer to be closer to their business if possible. I'm sure that there's probably a radius, optimum radius of walking up and down the hill and whatever, but you've got some real differences in the number of employees at places, so how do you, how do you recognize that? For instance, somewhere like Jordane's has got like ten or fifteen employees and some of them may come in together, some may commute on the train, but-
I mean, walk.
Huh?
I think a lot of them are fairly local and they walk to work.
I don't know, so what I'm saying is that, that, and then you have other places that might only have two employees, so there's a, there's a real disparity. It's not by address, you know, it's by, so how, yeah, so how do you do that and how do you keep it fair? Because you can't say-
This is part of it that needs more development, but I think, you know, we've, we've done surveys, for example, of businesses to tell us, you know-
How many do they need?
How many they need on any, at any given point in time is really what you're looking at. It's not a per-employee thing, it's basically a per-employee slot, you know, how many are needed. And we, we would issue some number, probably slightly less than what is actually needed, so that the balance can be found in the aqueduct, for example. I mean, it's, that, that part needs a little bit, a little bit of development. Brian and I talked about this before the meeting even, you know, that, but that's the concept anyway.
Like act number or something?
Yeah.
You can have it at six, even if you have twenty-five employees, but-
You know, remember, these are-
I think I watch out.
It's true, I agree.
Certain businesses, I don't know why you're punishing them, they've been business like-
Yeah, I think it depends. I mean, but I think it is also, if you have someone else comes in that runs a call center, then you can't just give, you know, like, there has to be, you know, I think at some point, you can't just say every employee gets one.
I think you're right, Brian.
Right.
But we don't have call centers.
We don't right now, we used to.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have- North St.
It was on Astor, it was on, on North and South Buckout.
Oh, once.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
North and Astor.
North Astor.
North Astor.
It was a servant ficklestone, right?
Yeah, there was, there was one, I think, at the Trent Building as well, at one point.
Yeah.
So, but I think we have to do something that doesn't, you know, treat these existing businesses that have grown in the way they have naturally, organically, and you can't, you can't just put a six slot.
No, no, I don't-
You're thinking of percentage of-
Look, the people are parking on the streets as it is.
Something like that.
They'll be happy for, well, we had that small charant or whatever we called it.
Kind of act person.
We did have business owners come in, this is enough years ago, maybe four years ago by then.
Yeah.
And floated the idea and it was incredibly well-received, like something was better than nothing, it wasn't, I, I think the expectation was, I don't expect all my employees to always have, but the same kind of something was like really wonderful.
Right.
So would that be, but you'd-
Would eliminate their need to churn and, and move cars.
But are they restricted as to, would there be like zones, so you have a parking permit? Yeah, I thought you couldn't do-
No, we kind of, I kind of, I kind of abandoned that idea once the lower part of Main Street turned into six-hour parking. Kind of eliminated the need to zone it.
But that's another argument for keeping those six-hour spots, because they will not just be used by commuters, but by, because obviously, it's gonna be to the advantage of the employee for a business to walk up the hill a couple of blocks and finally have to move their car, if they can park for six hours, rather than they have to move it three times for two-hour parking.
Right.
Obviously, this all calls for a parking garage at the bottom of Main Street.
That's, oh, that's on the other side, yeah. Did you see that?
Yeah, the, the, the Astor-
Yeah, I know.
But I-
The two-level-
Say a word.
Create an extra thirty spaces on-
Is that capital?
You don't have a word, you don't have a word for it.
Get on, no, we had a picture.
Exactly.
We did, we had a very nice picture.
All right, so is there, is there any-
North Astor.
No.
Just so I have direction, is there any, any feeling about the hourly restrictions, the hours being eight A M. to six P M. as opposed to the eight A M. to eight P M. that we originally talked about?
Against eight to six is pro-resident or pro-
It was pro-business.
Pro-business and eight to eight is pro-resident.
Yeah.
I guess I'd start with the eight to eight and, but that's just me.
What time do, well, that's an interesting question, because what time do people come home and what time do businesses have shift changes?
Well-
I mean, it's just-
It depends on the business, yeah, I mean-
It depends on the business, it's on the job, that's almost a possible question to-
I understand that, but I'm just saying that that's the kind of-
Well, yeah, you'd love to have a, an absolute, like a chip in everybody's-
Well, you know, restaurants are gonna be open past eight, so restaurants have the longer, you know, the longer shift.
Right.
Yeah, but they're done, but-
At five to eight or something, or five to-
Five to eleven.
Yeah, but, but, but the employees potentially have the tag, so they won't have to worry about that.
Right, some of them.
Right, some of them, not a lot.
No, I was thinking it's six versus the eight, so what do most, what do most people come home from work?
I'm sure, six to seven, yeah, you know, whatever, yeah.
I think enough people come home after six, I think seven is not unusual.
We're just guessing here, you know, people come home at all hours.
Why don't we, why don't we start with something and then get feedback?
That's why I said, that's why I was throwing it out.
It's now, well-
Going back to the original belief.
Now the restrictions last till anywhere between five and six, mostly six. But the proposal here is from eight to six.
So how do we lead with that? Let's see, with this proposal, a lot of discussion went into developing this proposal, let's see how it works. We never have to worry this with the chat about people not complaining if it doesn't work, so I'm sure we'll find-
Silence suffers.
Okay, got it.
And there's also the thing here, the aqueduct parking rules will continue to allow non-resident work.
That's, yeah, that's actually no change, yeah, yeah, we were, that would have changed if the eight P M. thing changed, but, so, anyway.
I would say the, the only, the only thing I'll throw out on parking is, I, I keep struggling with commercial, because I think I get the, I think in a perfect world, you wouldn't have any commercial parking. But I almost feel like if someone happens to have a business that needs commercial vehicles, we're going, kinda going out of our way, we're not going out of our way, we're trying to keep in mind the restaurants and all the other businesses by giving them permits and things, but now we're saying, hey, if you have a commercial business, you've run it here for forty years, you're not gonna be able to park in here every time. And I know some people are like, on somewhere else to park, but I, I'm thinking maybe it's almost a simpler thing where we don't want random commercial vehicles parking overnight, but maybe we have a certain amount for a locally-run, you know, for the local business gets a certain amount. you know, for the local business, it's a certain amount, I mean, again, it makes it much more complicated.
Why do they get to?
That is, part of it is, absolutely, absolutely.
And then parking on, I mean, the, the parking around the corner along North Astor, South Astor, in front of.
So I think if we could figure out something that kind of, you know, that kind of, you know, accommodates some of it, because there's, there are some that have been here for a while, and it's, you know, to me, it's like, you know, I started a business forty years ago, and now I can no longer park in town, it, to me, it's, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to that, that argument.
Well, if I understood, the next set of changes, they're not gonna cover.
We're not gonna commercial, I'm, I'm just, I'm just planting a seed, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but I'm just planting a seed.
No, but you know what, there, there may be creative ways of doing it, especially using the Aqueduct parking lot, for example, because.
That's all I'm saying, I'm hoping they're trying to help.
There's only one Aqueduct parking lot, though.
I know, but.
It's now at seven thousand spots.
What about the churches and the, where all the, the, the?
Well, yeah, we made those suggestions.
Why don't the people in Buckout Street park there, you know, it's like.
All right, well, there, but there may be less demand overnight for the Aqueduct parking lot if we allow.
Overnight parking, I mean, right. Okay, so let's, I'm just saying, plant the seed, because I don't want to single out just one group of businesses in town that were.
We need to, we need to address the commercial parking, the next round.
And, you know, those, wherever there are reserved spots for village employees during the workday, we should be looking at those spots. So there's some near the, like, where the parking lot as well, where they're all parked.
Yeah.
There's like five or six.
Well, Larry, obviously, he's parking until midnight.
Yeah, okay, got it.
All right, are we done with it?
Yes.
All employees can park on any kind of red gate, uh, red sidewalk.
Our only one is to have a reserved spot for BRT vehicles, so that we can actually park somewhere. Are we adjourned?
We're adjourned, okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn if I got a second, all in favor.